Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Trumbull Board of Education Tuesday, October 27, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands where he should be, under God.
Okay, Mrs. Norrell, correspondence, please.
Yes, the Board of Education received seven emails, all relating to our reopening plans. Emily and Chris Boyle have children both in the K-2 cohort and they asked to have their K-2 child remain in the cohort until we take three and five back full-time. Stephanie Bergama would, like all students, K-5 back for five days, and she gave a shout-out for Daniel's Farms' efforts with the hybrid model. Andrew Lovasky says, "Bring all kids back. Remote learning isn't effective. It's not working." Elena Doras and Kat Lima-Gazaska are requesting that Trumbull High School reinstate the fashion club. Greg Sims says, "Keep the current remote learning structure until January and then reevaluate before you make any changes." Catherine Martini sent a link to an adolescent sleep health webinar. And one, Gadaire Wilcox, feels that bringing three to five back on November 5th is premature. He's also concerned especially with Middlebrook because he feels it doesn't have sufficient capacity for social distancing, air conditioning, or ventilation. That's all the emails we received.
Thank you, Mrs. Norrell. Can we move on? Public comment. Our speaker here is Ruth Fontilla.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. So my name is Ruth Fontilla, and I have a fifth grader at Middlebrook and an eighth grader at Madison. And personally, I want to say how grateful I am for all the teachers and staff who are putting in more hours and energy than ever before to help our students have a successful year. Please know that parents are here to support you as you teach and help our kids. As a Vice President of the PTSA Council, I'm asking that when we have the ability to return to meetings in person, you work with this to keep this virtual format through Zoom or Facebook Live or whatever it might be as an option for our entire community. I have attended almost every Board of Ed meeting for the past three years, and I've never seen the amount of parent participation as I have since meetings were moved to a virtual format. Having over 200 viewers at each meeting since March fills me with hope and gratitude. It is clear that parents care about their kids' education and want to be a part of it. The part that was preventing parent participation in years past was the inability to juggle in-person attendance with the daily care of children, activities, and homework, and dinner prep, et cetera. PTSA Council knows how important all parts of the equation are to the educational success of our kids, teachers, students, and parents. One small silver lining in this very difficult time is that we have seemed to have cracked one barrier to parent participation with having virtual Board of Ed, PTA, and other community meetings. There are many benefits from meeting in person, for sure, but virtual meetings are able to be shared with more people, and for that, I am grateful. In addition to keeping the Board of Ed meetings broadcasted virtually, I'm also requesting that consideration be taken to increase the quality of the audio and video at these meetings. Relying solely on the audio from the video recorder in the Long Hill Assembly Room to provide quality sound for the audience has become an issue. It's becoming increasingly hard to hear everyone in the room. As someone who attends these, the meeting virtually, it's, I'm unable often to hear those in the Assembly Room speaking well or clearly. So I urge you to work with the Trumbull Public TV Crew, or Trumbull's Technology Advisor, Bill Chin, or anyone else who might have knowledge about the technology devices to find a reliable and quality solution for the sound issues. I know there might be a cost associated with getting the right equipment for this, but I hope you will agree, the parent and community involvement and participation in our children's success is well worth the investment. Thank you.
You. Next, we have our superintendent report.
Great, thank you, and good evening. I do have a few items for the superintendent update, and then I'll also have a comment about the reopening update later on in the agendas. But to start, I do want to address the situation that occurred at Trumbull High School on Friday of last week with the hate speech that occurred during one of our virtual fair. So on Friday, October 23rd, Principal Guarino brought to my attention an incident that occurred during the high school virtual club fair. This virtual fair was an opportunity for all students to investigate the different clubs and activities that they were interested in. Typically, when it's not COVID time, you have all the clubs out and kids have a chance to go to these different places. Club leaders took the time to electronically share the mission and benefits of participation. Unfortunately, we did have a few virtual attendees use the opportunity to type some hate speech into one of our club's online materials. To be fair, the hate speech was written by anonymous people, and we cannot be sure if these weren't our students or if the individuals even live in Connecticut. And that's, of course, one of the many challenges of the online environment. Nonetheless, the entirety of the Trumbull Public Schools, and I specifically denounce the use of this hate speech. We believe that every person in our school district is a valued member of our community, and as you see the signs displayed at our schools, there is no room for hate. Mr. Guarino immediately involved the Trumbull Police Department and the Trumbull IT Department on the case, has also made announcements to students in Cohort A already yesterday, and he'll be speaking to the Cohort B students on Thursday. We have identified at least one IP address, and we are continuing to investigate this situation. We will look to take swift and severe action if we can identify the culprits. However, on a large scale, this event is also an issue about education. The school district will do our best to provide high-quality education to all students. We will also continue to model and teach our students about equity, diversity, and social justice. We already have many strong programs, K-12, to make sure we provide that type of learning and education on important principles for our students. But I also look forward to the Social Justice Coalition that we're putting together to make a coherent approach to all the work regarding equity. I just wanted to make sure I made some comments tonight because this is something that Mr. Guarino addressed on Friday, and I wanted to make sure I addressed it this evening. Moving forward, I do want to also mention the budget development, just to give you a quick heads-up. We are in the middle of the 21-22 budget development. One of the most significant concerns I've seen, and I think the Board had the same concerns when they had to take this action, but it was the number of staff that had to be cut from the budget in order to make your budget balance last year. Close to 40 certified staff positions were cut, and this includes a significant number of instructional specialists, folks who, whose job is really twofold. One, to make sure some of our learners who have the most need are getting that need, and two, providing coaching to the teachers to make sure that our Tier 1 instruction is the best that it can be. And of course, during this pandemic, our students have not gotten our teachers on a everyday basis. Obviously, we've had to do remote learning, so I'm even more concerned about those students. We will have to try to find ways to rebuild some of the support that we lost coming into this, coming into this particular year as we move forward, in order to make sure that we continue to provide the type of quality education that we're looking to provide and that our parents have come to expect. I do expect that we'll have lots of conversations about budget over time, but I wanted to give you that quick thought process so far. And then I did want to mention, we had some, sorry about that. I do want to mention some staff passing as well. We had two staff members recently passed. One actually passed away on my second day of being here, and I really didn't learn about it until, until later. And then we also lost another staff member. So I just want to mention a couple of quick things. Michelle Bishop passed away on September 15, 2020. She was employed with the Trumbull Public Schools from September 1, 2005, through August 31, 2020. She was a part-time para, and then she became a full-time para in August of 2013. During her years of service, she worked at Middlebrook, Tashua, and Hillcrest. And like I said, she did, she did resign on August 31, 2020. And then she unfortunately passed away just a couple weeks afterwards. We also just recently learned that Jose Jaquim, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, passed away on October 25. He was employed with the Trumbull Public Schools since December 2013. He was a wage two, wage grade-two custodian, and then he became a grade-four custodian in 2015. And during his years of service, he worked at Madison, Middlebrook, and Jane Ryan. And so I would, I wish we could just take maybe 30 seconds or so for a moment of silence for both Michelle and Jose. Thank you. And that does end my report.
Thank you. Okay, next is the Board Chair report. Okay. The Trumbull Board of Education will seek three parents and two community members to serve a two-year term as members of the Trumbull Board of Education Policy Advisory Committee. Applications are available on the Trumbull Public School website. Completed forms must be received by 5:00 PM November 4, 2020. Please send the applications to Tim Gallo and Lucinda Timpinelli at our Board of Education email address. The term span is November 2020 through August 2022. And thank you to those who have already submitted. I also want to thank all our teachers for their outstanding work as they navigate through the hybrid model. And also, I would like to thank all the staff who are working daily in the schools to keep our schools up and running. We really sincerely appreciate all your priceless efforts. And also, we were trying to think of what would be a great gift in memory of Mary Ellen Bolton. So all our seven Board of Ed members, we will be personally purchasing a trade that will be planted on Jane Ryan property in memory of Mary Ellen. And at a later date, we will make sure that we place a plaque there also. Okay. Next is our teacher representative, Matt Braxia. Matt, are you there?
Matt's being brought in as panelists here momentarily.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. The TA, I'm sorry. The TA would like to share their appreciation that Trumbull has finally a properly professional development and evaluation committee with a teacher representative co-chair, as was the case in 2012, when the current T-Val plan, which is considered by many to be a model in the state, was created by a group of teachers and administrators. This step signals a return to the cooperation between teachers, administration, which made Trumbull such a successful district. In a similar vein, teachers are hopeful that the new COVID Task Force made up of teachers and administrators will increase communication and coordination as we all try to make decisions that are in the best interest of the learning community. At the most recent meeting, two issues were discussed, finding out whether teachers teach both our in-class students and our remote learners. It is especially difficult for elementary teachers who are seeing their classes fully returned to in-person learning four days a week while also having a few remote learners. The other important issue is continuing Wednesdays as a half-day of planning and collaboration rather than a full day of remote learning. The time on Wednesdays is crucial to plan for academics and this new way of learning. Many teachers at all levels are planning for students in class, those who are remote, and those who attend four days a week. Teachers need as much time as possible to meet the needs of all their students, whether in class or remote. The district has recently extended or added technologies which have already been extremely, the grade transfer add-on makes transferring grades from Google Classroom to Infinite Campus seamless and saves a lot of time, and also reduces the potential for errors in transferring. Paradek is a Google Slides add-on which teachers have been using to increase the interactive nature of their slide presentations. By renewing that license, the district has ensured that the months of work the teachers have invested in their lessons don't go to waste. We hope that the district will be able to provide Google Enterprise accounts for teachers, which add important features to Google Classroom and Google Meet, our primary teaching platforms for the foreseeable future. While it seemed cost-prohibitive at first with an estimate of up to $200,000, recent information has shown that we can provide those accounts for teachers for less than one-tenth of the cost. It will be a valuable investment and a bargain for the price. Recently, teachers were informed that the deadline to set goals has been extended by a week. This extension will allow teachers, especially our K-2 teachers, who just last week saw their classrooms radically transform on short notice, the necessary time to set goals, which will benefit the students and which will have a positive impact on the Trumbull education community. Finally, Trumbull teachers were sat and disgusted on Friday, 10/23, to receive the email from Trumbull High School Principal Mark Guarino informing us that one or more individuals posted hateful comments on a site for one of our school-based clubs. We stand with Principal Guarino when he says that the comments will never be tolerated within our school, and in addition to any legal or punitive action that is taken against the individuals responsible for this particular attack. This incident demonstrates the need for anti-racist and anti-bias training and program. We applaud Dr. Semmel for adopting a social justice goal as one of the district goals, and we support his initiative to create the TPS Coalition for Social Justice. These are important and necessary first steps, but we must be ready to move on. Contrary to what some people may think, the beliefs at the base of actions such as these are not just a difference in opinion, but a misconception about the world. The reason why a just society does not tolerate incidents like this is not because it's impolite or because they hurt other people, although they are that as well, it's because our understanding of how the world works has changed in the last 70 years. As educators, it is our responsibility to help our students and our community understand those changes. But those classroom conversations can be difficult to have, which is why we need the proper training to prepare us as teachers to facilitate discussion, which both directly addresses issues of racism, sexism, antisemitism, and homophobia, and which also establishes norms in the classroom where these topics can be addressed in a way that is open and safe. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
All set. Thank you.
Okay, our next report and action items. I need a motion for the approval for the minutes of the regular meeting of 10/13/2020.
Lucinda, I'll make the motion. I make a motion.
Okay, could you finish the motion, Jackie, please?
I'm sorry.
Okay, make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 13, 2020.
And Tim?
I second that motion.
You second that motion. Okay, does anyone have anything they want to correct or add or something was left out, or anything you want to say about those minutes? Anyone? No, we're all set. Okay, let me take the vote. Okay, I'm ready for Tini. Okay, Lucinda Timpinelli, accept. Mike Ward?
Accept.
Okay, Jackie Norrell?
Accept.
Okay, Scott, there?
Accept.
Okay, Tim Gallo?
Yes, accept.
Okay, Eddie Palo?
Accept.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, personnel. Dr. Semmel?
All right, with the, with the personnel, there's been no changes since the last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, and the next is you. It's reopening update.
All right, back to me again. Reopening update. Yes, so Mr. Braxia actually mentioned that we put together a, I think he called it a COVID Task Force. We call it the Advisory Committee Regarding, you know, Regarding COVID. But since our last Board of Ed meeting, I did create an advisory team to help me regarding further steps with reopening. And we have two major tasks for our advisory meeting. The first one is to review the weekly health data, and this is really critical. We have this weekly health data as a link on our reopening page on our website, but that's one of the main priorities for our team to look at. And this data is provided by the Department of Public Health, and it's two weeks' worth of data. And the Department of Public Health really encourages us to use that data because using a 14-day model allows you to have what they call stabilized data. So you don't have peaks and valleys and get concerned about one particular day. You look at a 14-days' worth of data in order to, in order to make your decisions. The second major task is to discuss opportunities and obstacles as it relates to reopening our schools. So members of the team are teachers and administrators, but we also have Lynn Steinberg, who's the Director of Nursing. We also have Lucy Van Gogh join us, who's in charge of the Department of Public Health here in Trumbull. So we have a wide-ranging group of folks who are there to look at this. In terms of the weekly health data currently, the last of the data that is published, both the leading and the secondary indicators are listed as low for Fairfield County at this time. And specifically for Trumbull, we have six cases per 100,000 over that most recent two-week reporting period and a 1.9% positivity rate. I know every day you'll hear about different data, but again, that's the two-week data that we're supposed to be looking at. From our, from the perspective of K-2, I had a chance to go into classrooms, and I got to tell you, seeing all those youngsters back in the classrooms, they were absolutely thrilled to be there. Comments made from teachers on a recent feedback document that we asked them for, they also said that there was a lot more energy in the room. They were able to do a lot more with the children with having them back in person. At the same time, they did mention, because we did ask about trying to find ways to improve our COVID mitigation factors. So that's another piece that we talk about at our advisory team as well, about what else we can do in order to improve our mitigation factors. So in terms of our reopening, and regarding grades three through five, given that the health data continues to support full in-person learning, we will be allowing all of our grade three through five students to return on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. Of course, we will continue to have our temporary remote learning option for those parents who choose that. We will continue to provide full remote learning for all students on Wednesday. We will officially bring our grade three through five students back on Thursday, November 5. Again, all three through five students who aren't choosing remote learning will be able to start on Thursday, November 5. That gives more time for parents to prepare, also for our teachers to be prepared, and given the fact that Tuesday and Wednesday are both non-school days of that week, it just makes more sense from that standpoint. Tomorrow, parents of students, parents who have students in grades three through five should look for an email from the district. There will be a survey asking them a number of questions about what they will be choosing to do, so we can be better, be better prepared for that. But I'm definitely excited that we have the opportunity to teach more of our students in person, and I look forward to continuing our reopening process. But at the same time, we're not, we're, we're very aware of the health data. We're very aware that we need to pay attention to that. So those of you who think that we're not paying attention to that, we are on a weekly basis, and we will continue to. So people need to understand, there could come a time where we actually need to scale back, depending on what the health data is saying. So it's not just a plow-ahead kind of process. It's, it's continue to do what we can while the data allows us to do so. But that's my update regarding reopening.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, Madam Chair, I can?
Sure, go ahead, Mr.
Dr. Semmel, how are we doing on transportation now for W? On elementary school?
So one part of this, so the drop-off at the elementary schools, since we brought more K-2 students back, we've seen, we've certainly seen more cars there dropping, dropping kids off. So the principals had to work through that with their staff. They're not anticipating that when we bring grades three through five back, there'll be a significant bump of car traffic out there. They've, they've looked at the number of students who are, you know, the only sibling or the only person that's in that grades three through five. So a few of the principals have said they're expecting maybe 10 to 15 more cars being added to the morning routine. Buses, there, there are more students on the buses, but I don't have specifics for you. Yeah, so we're not nearly near what is allowed at this time. The State Department of Education allows nearly maximum capacity on our buses, given the health data currently. What we do, we're having them spread out as much as possible, and as you know, masks are required of the students when they're on the bus. So we seem to be doing fine. I checked in with Ms. Perkins, our transportation person, and we seem to be in good shape.
How about the increased activity at lunchtime? Have they addressed that at each of the schools? How are they going to address the number of students that now?
Yeah, they're, they're, the students are eating, the elementary students continue to eat in the, in their classrooms. So that's, that's continuing on. However, the principals, they know that they can choose to use the cafeteria in order to try to create additional space. But that's, each building, I think, like I said a couple of weeks ago, was designed differently. I can't say it's without challenge. None of this is without challenge. I don't want it to come off and sound like, oh, yeah, this is, this is all super, super easy. It's not. Our lunch aids are going to be continuing to clean down desks. We need to continue to work on that, make sure that all the garbage gets thrown away, desks are cleaned. But after the first week plus a couple of days here, our teachers are starting to get more used to that routine. It's, it's kind of like starting the year over again. And for our grades three through five teachers, it's going to be a little like that on November 5. They're going to feel like, I've got all these students here in front of me, and I've got to kind of redo my routines and practices.
Has there been any police presence at some of the problems with the cars coming and going? Have the police been involved in any way to help and assist them?
At the beginning of the year, they, they were involved, but they have not been involved, to my knowledge, since then. The principals have been able to, to manage through this. Again, it's not without difficulty.
I understand that.
Yes, some of our schools have some areas where traffic is more complicated.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
This is Mr. Palo. May I say a word or two?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I support Dr. Semmel's decision here. I, I track the, these, these numbers coming from the state of Connecticut as well. I'm not part of his committee, but, you know, recently, and obviously today, the positivity rate was up over 4%. But the state of Connecticut does some good things, and they also do some bad things. The bad things are, is they don't give you much explanation as to where that positivity rate is, is, where is it popping? Whether it's the elderly, the youth, they don't give you a lot of information. So unless someone on this board or Dr. Semmel can tell me that in this age group, that there is a, you know, an increase in the positivity rate, I fully support what, what he wants to do. I think it's the right thing to do for the kids, and I've not seen any, any evidence otherwise telling me that this isn't the right thing to do. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I support his decision.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to Dr. Bud now. Later, the later school start update, please.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. So this presentation is to show you and to just discuss briefly the three sets of minutes we have in here from the Committee U form back in July to study later school start times. And we've put in the packet the minute meetings, minutes from the meetings of July 21, October 7, and October 22. And I also want to say, we do have a section of the TPS website on the teaching and learning devoted to this committee. These minutes and other things, such as the previous presentations on this topic, are there. I will just highlight a few things from the minutes. If you look at the minutes from July 21, I would remind the Board that we have a 21-person committee that I'm chairing with the names. that we have a twenty-one person committee that I'm chairing with the names that came forward from the board in mid-July. And these are representative parents, teachers, administrators, community members, and some other staff from the district who are able to then look at the key topics of inter-district communication, stakeholder input, as well as the key topics related to elementary, middle, and high school impact of potential, potential options for later school start times. And if you go past those typed minutes, you'll see the printout of a PowerPoint that was used at that first meeting of the committee on July twenty first. And I remind the committee at every meeting, and I've mentioned to you tonight, that our committee charge is this, or that you voted on in mid-July, to determine what implementation of later school start times would look like and require in Trumbull. So ultimately, our charge is to come to you at your November board meeting with implementation details. And I will speak a little bit about how that's evolved over our past few meetings. But we may have a recommendation to the board in November, one way or another. We may not, but regardless, we will have the details for you on things like transportation, potential contractual implications, et cetera. So we started to look at all of that in great detail, and I couldn't be, I couldn't be happier with the committee's progress. I should also mention that the meetings are recorded. And if you wanted more detail on what's happened at any one of them, you could view the recordings at that website I mentioned. Now, yeah, you will see, of course, the minutes too from our October seventh meeting, but I will all, I ask you to move forward to our October twenty second meeting last Thursday. And I just want to gesture toward where our committee is going to be presenting to you or the structure that we're going to be using at your November board meeting. Essentially, the options for later school start times coalesce around four types of options. Now, some of them have slight tweaks, but essentially there are four main options. And the best place to see them would be on page two of the October twenty second minutes. And they're listed at the top. And the way I presented them there really relate to the transportation options from Ms. Perkins. Because as I think you know, we are obligated to provide free transportation to every student in the public schools. One option, which is the first on this page I'm reading, is to keep the two-tier bus structure, but swap elementary and secondary times so that the elementary goes to school earliest and the secondary goes to school later. Now, you may have opinions about that. My job is not to present these options in great detail and certainly not to give you my opinion. I'm just saying that that's how we're structuring our conversations because that is an option. The second option is to keep the two-tier bus structure, but to move all start times later than they are now. The third option is to keep the two-tier bus structure, but to move the high school times to align with the elementary times. That is, the middle school would start earlier, but the high school and elementary later. And then the fourth option is to add a third tier to the bus structure so that we have three different sets of times. Now, various committee members will present with me to you in November. So again, my job today is not to discuss these. My job is not to get into the details, but to simply have you have some sense that we're on the path that you asked us to be on. There are implications to all of these, positive, negative. Some may depend on your point of view, but my job, as I see it, as you charged me in July, is to help the committee have some organized presentation to you. So you see cost impact, transportation impact, impact to our programming, pre-K all the way through twelve, potential town impact. We have representation from TLC and other programs important to us. I'll end with this. We have a committee meeting scheduled for this Thursday, the twenty ninth, in the late afternoon at four o'clock. We also have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, November fifth. And with those meetings, we feel confident that we'll have an organized presentation by some of these committee members and myself to you, likely at your November tenth meeting. And I do think we are on track to do what you asked us to do at that meeting, which is to present to you again what the implementation of this would look like in Trumbull so that the board could make any decision that the board would or wouldn't want to make. So I appreciate you letting me give you an update on where that committee is this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bud. Okay, moving on, Dr., it's Mr. Ward, Curriculum Committee report, Mr. Ward.
Yes, Madam Chair. We met this past week. We have four curriculum guides to look at and approve. Listed on the agenda, we have the Honors, Justice, and Law, Curriculum Law, Criminal Law, I say, and Honors, Justice, and Law, Civil Law. And then Theater Exploration, about American musicals, and then cybersecurity. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Bud.
Well, you got me excited for a moment that we could offer, of course, some Curriculum Law, which I'd be happy to teach with Dr. Semmel. And I don't know that we'd attract any students to it, but it's exciting to me. I want to point out that these are four new courses that represent several new courses that the Curriculum Committee and the Board have allowed Trumbull High School administrators and teachers to develop over the past year. And in fact, we have many students who are benefiting from these courses. So in our regular cycle that we talk about, you allowed about a year ago, these courses to be published in the program of studies to see if we had a sufficient enrollment. We got sufficient enrollment. You funded curriculum development for these projects over the summer, and in some cases, some text resources. And we heard from the teachers who have really been able to develop some cutting edge courses. The first two are in the Social Studies Department, the Honors, Justice, and Law. We have five or six sections every year. And one semester is at the Criminal Law, on the Criminal Law focus. The other semester on the Civil Law focus. And Mr. August came to us and spoke about how in both courses, there is a balanced context of how legal developments relate to current situations in the world. And also very interesting, at the Civil Law course, students write a really polished academic law review article that allows them to really replicate how we could apply legal issues that might seem academic in the civil sense to issues related to youth today. The third curriculum guide you see is in our effort to expand the arts programming at Trumbull High School. You've done that in the Visual Arts Department and the Music Department, and this is obviously in the Theater Arts Department. Last month, we had a curriculum guide in Theater Tech that came to the Curriculum Committee from Mr. Braxick. This is Theater Exploration, the American Musical, that Miss Blaine teaches. It's actually a really interesting course, and I would just commend you to the vast, vast resources she has included here that not only scope out the history and timeline of the American musical, but get, for example, in, in unit four, into some really interesting topics of social justice, which we've talked about in a few contexts tonight, and how that is seen through various American musicals. And then fourth, turning to the STEM world, cybersecurity has been an offering to expand our Computer Science Department. Mr. Kaminsky is pleased to teach several sections of this. We see local colleges and universities opening up majors in cybersecurity. And in fact, he's been able to develop an innovative curriculum that takes advantage of online resources to really get students into this topic for a semester. So I, I am most pleased when I get to present these kind of curriculum guides because for all of you on the board and to the community for its support, you're seeing the full cycle now of how you're offering students at Trumbull High School programs of study and courses that simply weren't available in the past, and they are much better prepared for exiting Trumbull High School as a result. So thank you very much. I certainly support your approving these tonight.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mrs. Patiti if she has any comments as a member of the Curriculum Committee.
No, I, all, all the courses were excellent. And, you know, we talked a little about cybersecurity, definitely something students could look at in the future. One benefit of the, of the teacher's very good job.
Some of the books, the textbooks that the students have, there are some law cases there in Connecticut that are illustrated. And the last time we met, I did check out my nephew Scott, who works on Broadway. And the news he tells me, it's, it's like, twenty twenty-two may be the first time we're looking at Broadway. That's a long way. Not that he's an expert, but he's been working on it the last five years. But, no, we did excellent, recommend them very well done. Cybersecurity, we did discuss that, a great view of the hot topic right now, as I had a chair.
Okay, and I'd like to add, I was fortunate enough, Mr. August allowed me to read one of the law review articles, and it was really very interesting. It was about an eleven-page research, and it did deal with the application and the ramifications of different law cases and how to approach it. I was impressed by the research, and this person did an excellent job. So the course is, is wonderful. I'm, I'm really happy with the way those two courses are proceeding. Theater Exploration, another good one. This is not that you want to go out there and sing and dance, it's none of that. It's what happens behind the scenes. And it was very interesting to hear Mrs. Blaine explain how this happens. And I had a, I had to ask her, did it have anything to do with the stage setup? Because we have our people in our technology department, which is really industrial arts in the old days. And they make the sets, they make the scene, the settings for the, for all the plays. So she said, yes, they were thinking that some of those people would be interested in taking this course. So that was a good thing also. They, all of them also told us that enrollment is up in all these courses, so we were happy to hear that. And that last one, cybersecurity, I thought that was really, that's a cool course, and that is something we should really look at, how people are protecting their security in their towns. And there are majors in this in the future, and I think that will be a great course as it moves forward. And I asked Mr. Kaminsky to research it into a second part of that course, and he said he would do that. So I would recommend this too, that we will approve this. So I'm going to need a motion for this, Mrs. Patiti.
Okay, so we're asking for a motion to approve Honors, Justice, and Law, Criminal Law, Honors, Justice, and Law, Civil Law, Theater Exploration, American Musical, and Cybersecurity.
I need a second.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. Who's seconding now?
Let's Scott.
Scott, you can second that, thank you. Okay.
Could I actually, could I make a comment also before?
Sure you can.
First of all, I just, I wanted to say that the, the, the work that goes into creating these curriculum guides is just astounding, right? To a, a relative late person, to just look at all the thought and planning that goes into that. And I wanted to ask Dr. Bud if he could perhaps speak to, like, what does it, what does it really take to create a curriculum guide from scratch like that in terms of, in terms of hours and effort on the behalf of Mrs. Blaine and the others?
The key thing, and I can't quantify this, is an excellent professional teacher who knows his or her subject and has the deep curiosity to explore it further. Because in almost every single one of these cases, this particular curriculum or this particular focus was not what this individual teacher studied in, say, college to prepare to be a teacher. But we're talking about three teachers here, and they represent six hundred other people pre-K twelve who really are on top of their craft. Now, having said that, once they're really dedicated and really knowledgeable, then it can depend in terms of hours to develop a curriculum guide, if there are models out there, if other districts are really doing these kind of courses that we can build on. I would say typically, though, for a brand new course, we allocate, you'll see it in the budget proposal, I'm sure, four to five days of work over the summer. And sometimes, of course, people are collaborating, so we have two or three people. But I have to go back and say it starts with somebody who's really passionate about bringing the new advances in a field to our current students.
That's great, thank you for that. I just think it's important for everybody to realize that those things don't, you just don't print them out and put them in that package. There's a lot of really great work. So thank you very much to you and the rest of the group.
Lucinda, if I could just say something before we vote. Although all four of the curriculums were outstanding, very well developed, goals, objectives, myself, between my own love of musical theater, have to say that that one was just marvelous. If you look at the five units, it's just unbelievable, going from the timeline into something to point out. And finally, you know, looking at the rise up and, and looking at business. So I've really truthfully looked at and said, gee, I'd like to audit this class. Jonathan, you may tell Jessica that I really feel she did an excellent job and might find an email from me if that virus ever calms down, wanting to audit it because it's outstanding, it really is, and it's a whole new area for us.
Mrs. Darcelle, I'm sure Dr. Bud will give you the soft cover book which he gave me on the Broadway history. I'd love to join.
Well, I love the book, but, you know.
Scott, can you, can you solo make costumes for this?
It was just wonderful. And Jonathan, it's all the teachers, they, all four curriculums were outstanding. Makes me very proud.
All right, since we all made comments, now is anyone else? Okay, let me take the vote. Marie Patiti? In favor, good. Lucinda and Benelli in favor? Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Norso?
In favor.
Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Tim Gallo?
Yes, in favor, Lucinda.
Andy Palo?
More great offerings, I am very much in favor.
Thank you, okay. All right, moving on, Mr. Gallo, Policy Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Policy Committee met on Monday, yesterday, and we have two policies that we would like to put forward tonight for the board's review. One of them is a second reading, and it kind of was tabled for just a little bit. And it is now coming back up again, and that one is the Facilities Committee policy change for policy number ninety-one thirty-four. And then there is another policy concerning face coverings, and this is policy number ninety-one thirty-four, I'm sorry, fifty-one forty-one point nine for the face coverings. So, Dr. Bud, I would like to turn it over to you if you could explain those changes in policy.
Sure, sticking with the theater theme, I would say ninety-one thirty-four is a reprise. It's a reprise of the board's work in twenty eighteen. So as you see from the cover sheet, in July of twenty eighteen, the Policy Committee of the Board at that time was asked to develop a policy that would express the charge of a facilities committee. And the board has policies like this for the Curriculum Committee, the Finance Committee, and even the Policy Committee. We didn't have one for the Facilities Committee. So board members and Policy Committee members at the time drafted this policy, which conforms to the general statutes as far as the role of a board facilities committee. That came to the board to review the history on this for a first reading on July twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen. And then it came for a second reading with some additions on August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen. And the board had some commentary back in August and felt it was best to table the policy at that time until a future Policy Committee or a board could come back to it and really review it fresh. Well, we were asked to do that over the past month or so, and so we brought this off of the table, back to the board as a second reading tonight. This policy that you're seeing tonight is the same as the board in twenty eighteen saw at a first reading. And to review it with one addition, that I'll speak about in a moment. But to review it briefly, the first paragraph of this Facilities Committee policy really takes language from your bylaws to express the simple purpose of the committee and also who is on it in terms of board representation with minority party representation, et cetera, and the supervisor of facilities and maintenance as a staff ex officio member. And then the next paragraph, the only other paragraph, speaks to all the different statutory requirements of a facilities committee. And that's where you see one small addition in item A. The Facilities Committee shall meet regularly to review issues and needs relating to the district's physical plant operations and personnel related thereto. And the phrase "and personnel" was suggested at Mr. Hendrickson's, was added at Mr. Hendrickson's suggestion, which makes quite a lot of sense because the personnel to support the facilities relates quite a bit to the operations. And then the other details that are there relate to facilities, the maintenance schedule, and connection to the Finance Committee and the capital plan. These again come right from the statutes. They've been vetted newly by Mr. Hendrickson, our business administrator at this time. And finally, the last sentence is that the finding, the Facilities Committee, like our other committees, will have a report of each meeting that gets forwarded to. will have a report of each meeting that gets forwarded to the board. So at any rate, seeing that this is exceptionally similar with that one additional phrase to what the 2018 policy committee saw and what the board saw at first reading in 2018, I would recommend it to you to take off the table and approve this evening, so that the facilities committee has a charge.
Okay, Scott, I'd like you to make a motion first.
Well, I, I think that Mike Ward should make the motion, since he's actually been working on this policy for all those years.
Okay, he just did, would you second it, please?
I will second it, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Is there anybody with a question on this for either Scott or Dr. Bud or Mr. Ward or myself? I was on the facilities committee too for a while.
Lucinda, I would just, I would just like to say, Madam Chair, if, if I, if I may, that I'm just very proud of the work on the, on the policy committee on this, going through this policy with a fine-tooth comb. And everything really, really looks in order, this is definitely something that the other committees have. And, you know, we are, we are glad to be able to offer it to the, to the facilities committee as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna take the vote, if no one has any more questions. Okay, Marie Patiti? Okay, I am in favor, Lucinda and Benelli, Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Marcel?
In favor.
Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Tim Gallo?
Yes, in favor.
Andy Paylow?
In favor.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the first reading. And this is, that's Mr..
This is 5141.9 face covering. And the Connecticut State Department of Education asks boards to have a policy in writing on this, essentially for purposes of the pandemic, to represent the district's commitment to face coverings, which are, of course, a vital mitigation strategy. And also to make sure that for local context, we really capture the state guidelines on things like exceptions to face coverings. So I'll point out some of the key elements of this. In the first paragraph, you see the board's commitment to following the guidance of the State Department of Education and the Department of Public Health. And as we have seen occasionally, the guidance changes from those agencies, but we're committed to following that. In the second paragraph, we make a commitment to face coverings as a mitigation strategy. And we commit that all students, staff, and visitors will comply with that. And we clearly define a face covering as one that completely covers the nose and mouth. We clarify that this relates to individuals in our buildings, on school grounds, or on school transportation. Now, the next sentences that are about the exceptions, these come from the guidance of the State Department or from various statutes. So for example, exceptions, if you're participating in a mask break, if you're eating snack or your meal, if you're an adult working in a private office, in a shared office six feet away from others, or in a classroom where you're the only individual. And individuals with documented medical exemptions. And we have some questions about this, so I'll explain that the next sentence about what can qualify you for a medical exemption, this comes straight from the state guidelines. And when you get to the point about medical documentation to the appropriate school nurse, we are in single digits for students who qualify for that exemption. So it's very rare, and that language that you see here comes right from the state as well, they expect that to be rare. And of course, we might have students who need accommodations based on a disability through a PPT meeting or a Section 504 meeting. In the next paragraph, or the next small paragraph, that was added last night by the facility, by the policy committee, and they suggested, I thought it was a great suggestion, that we clarify that this policy does not allow a student to wear a mask that totally obscures the face and would make you not able to be identified, think of a Halloween mask, this is not that kind of a face covering. It is the standard face covering. We talk in the next paragraph that we provide masks for students and staff if they do not bring their own. We talk about the fact that violations of the policy by students are handled in the same way. Any other disciplinary consequence is handled. Violations of the policy by staff may result in disciplinary action, and by visitors may result in denial of entry to school facilities. We have captured a paragraph that student athletes' mask coverings is covered by CIAC guidelines, and those guidelines are communicated by the athletic director in writing on the athletic director's website, or the athletic department's website, to student athletes and their parents. And those connect to whether certain activities are low aerobic, anaerobic, et cetera. Another suggestion is in the next paragraph from the policy committee, they wanted to make sure that we built in some kind of review mechanism, because this policy shouldn't last the next 50 years. So we, we came up with this paragraph that during the pandemic, this policy will be reviewed regularly by the policy committee with any recommended revisions and eventual rescission to the Board of Education. So at some point, we'll be back here saying, it's time, it's time to end this policy. But for now, it's time to start the policy, and that's why we're here for a first week.
I'd like to ask a question, Lucinda?
Go ahead.
Jonathan, it says that, you said there's just five per people. And in the policy, it says that the nurses at the school will decide from the paperwork. I question why we would have 11 nurses reading it instead of just the main nurse, since there were only five cases, it wouldn't be that she'd be overworked, because that would be the same person looking at the paperwork and making of what I consider a very big decision, a decision that could have us in court. So I just asked the policy committee to go back and just look at that, perhaps putting not 11 nurses looking, being free to look at them, but having that Lynn, the head nurse, make those decisions.
It's an excellent suggestion, it is the practice, so we can qualify, clarify that in the policy. So the intent of the policy is that the individual requesting that exemption will provide that documentation, the appropriate school nurse as the point of contact. In practice, that that nurse turns it around to Ms. Steiger, the nursing director, and also we have the school's medical advisor on consult if necessary, but I think it's a very good suggestion, we can clarify that.
Just to include it, well, then, because that is the kind of policy I would like, what you just said. You know, that it comes in and then it's sent to the higher up. Thank you.
Okay, we don't have to vote on this because it's a first reading, so we're going to, glad you had your questions. Does anyone else have a suggestion or question, Mr. Care?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question, Dr. Bud. It, it seems that, you know, over the course of the last six months or so, we've, we've probably either approved policies related to the pandemic or made alterations to policies to accommodate some, some situation that has come up. Do you now, and if not, could you keep an index of all the policies that have been impacted by COVID so that we could at a later date go back and either revise them again or review them in the same way you're gonna review this one periodically?
Absolutely, if we can provide some information on that, perhaps when we're back at a second reading for this one.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bud.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Bud?
I would just, I would just say, Madam Chair, that, again, you know, in, in these difficult unprecedented times, the work of the policy committee is, has been very, very important. And maybe this is a little bit of a shameless plug, but we remember that we are looking for new members for the policy committee. And you, you talked about that earlier tonight, Lucinda, and also it is, it is on the website for the application. And it also was put on Facebook as well, in the, in the parent education site, so you can find it there as well. And, and the work that we've done there has been so, so important, especially during this time. It, it's amazing what, what some of the folks, you know, think about at the policy committee and suggest. And because of that, we've been able to offer some, some very solid policies to, to bring forward to the board. So again, very appreciative to, to that work, and it's exciting work, if, if it's something that you would like to be involved in.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bud. Okay, our next agenda item is the finance committee report. Mr. Hendrickson, we got a subcommittee meeting in the board last week, and Mr. Hendrickson is gonna present.
First off, Madam Chairman, I'd like to thank Tremble for hiring me.
You're welcome.
So I continue working for Dr. Semel, who I've worked for for past, oh, now, almost two and a half years. And also as a side benefit, I've just established my working relationship with Dr. Hartman, who I've worked with for a year and three. So getting on to tonight's report. It is really too early in the school year to make year-end projections. Normally, this is done in November or December, but we've established a run rate, so more accurate and well, well-thought-out projections have been made. An integral part of this analysis is this, Ms. Pedersen and I are comparing the district's latest payroll to the budget amounts, so that we can tally up the budget to make sure it compares the payroll fairly. And our longer-range plan would be to establish a position control system for these units. So it would involve hiring, tracking, hiring, purchase from the district, and other personal investments. I'm currently reviewing the expense categories, and my next focus will be on full-time equivalents. At our committee meeting last week, there was a question of incremental sections added post-budget. I work with Dr. Bud, in the budget process, we went from 130, 142 sections in 1920 to 32 section. We decreased that to 139 sections, and then we increased that to 145 over the summer. Add an M.A. five-step salary of $60,000 roughly, that would add $360,000 to the budget. Examining the town accounts, there's only been a slight change since August, and that was in non-public schools and teachers. In the student activities accounts, as one might suspect, activity has started to pick up. But only $2,000 expenditures since last month, and the fragment balance is about a quarter of a million dollars. In the grants or 200 accounts, many of the grants, especially in the title grants, show a deficit. That is because they are not funded yet, the regular return accounts. We normally get grant letters from the state in the November, December timeframe, so this is nothing to be upset about at this time. Going to the more relevant acts of grants, the Esser grant, for which we received $127,000, we have applied for all those funds, and currently working on the run of relief fund. And Ms. Pedersen has been compiling that and has, has submitted that. However, as I told you last week, they suspended the deadline date, that deadline date has now been extended to Monday, November 2nd. So if there are any last-minute tweaks, we can do that. And that's that for the grants. In the area of special revenue funds, there are, there are a couple I want to look at going forward. Those are particularly the elementary strings and band, and also what we're charging for facilities, to make sure we're having appropriate fees in both categories, and so that we cover our expenses. A member of our finance subcommittee requested that facilities use fees associated with the auditorium at the high school be segregated, so that we can allocate those facility use funds specifically for use to prepare and maintain that auditorium, we certainly can do that. In the area of food service, the seasonal summer option, which originally had been extended to December 31st of this year, has again been extended until June 30th, 2021. In the course of our review of this, I was asked by a board member to describe the reimbursement process. Ms. Cinco, our first staff's, it's monthly report to me that I review and approve electronically that's forwarded to the state for our reimbursement for food-related programs. And we've been asked by the superintendent to look at the food service operations and determine what a break even is for that. And that involves several variables such as student participation, all card sales, and also overall, and the COVID environment. Were particularly challenged, because roughly only 40% of our student bodies attending at any time, because we have Wednesdays off, and we have 50% of students attending either Monday, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday. In the scholarship funds, they've increased about $1,000 month to month. And other, as Superintendent Semel mentioned, we are working on 2020, 2021-2010 budget. I created or developed a Google sheet with multiple tabs for each school, and each department had to input their proposed budget. With that, they had Fisher's budget and the 1920 budget and expense, expense to do their analysis. And so that, we're almost done with our reviews with the department heads and the, and the principals, and then we'll put, put the payroll in and also insurance, because we're reviewing that tomorrow, because I was just finished today. And lastly. Just a comment on the budget. By 82 to 84% of the budget is covered by salaries and benefits. If you add transportation and energy onto that, you have roughly 92% of the budget, which leaves only roughly eight, maybe 10% maximum as just fresheners and the board, market debt, and/or food expenses. So I'm prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, does anyone have a question for?
Madam Chair?
Scott has, Scott has his hand up first.
Actually, Andrew, Andrew, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Scott.
Okay. Paul, I just wanted to, a, note that I appreciate the fact that you've, at the end of the, the report, you've broken out the COVID-related expenses. And I was wondering, there was one particularly big number on there, the computer equipment. And I was wondering if you have a sense, and if not, you can get back to us later, about exactly what, what those persons, I'm presuming they were, that they were Chromebook replacements that we needed to do to get everybody one-to-one ratio, but I just wanted to confirm.
Okay, give the details, but the care, the CRF grant is not related to computer equipment directly. Only the Esser grant was related to technology equipment that could be used outside of the classroom, because the CRF grant is dedicated to bringing students back, not maintaining a distance-oriented environment.
Okay, and that, so that actually brings me to my, the second question I was gonna ask, which is, can you prepare for us at some point in the future, not, not the too-far future? And, you know, some kind of an analysis that shows which of these items we actually think we're gonna get reimbursed from one or, or one of the other grant, and how much of it might remain in our operating budget? Just so we have a sense of how we're maximizing those, those grant funds?
Yes, that's, that's quite possible.
That'd be great, thank you.
All right, Andy?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear, when, when we were talking about the second grant was. second grant, was that the CRF grant you were talking about?
Yes, it was.
And that's, just so the public knows, that's the coronavirus relief fund.
That is, that is also for.
Grant, and so, and how much did we submit for that, on that grant, for?
Yeah, it's 2.1 million.
2.1 million, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question for Paul?
How do we handle, I'm sorry, Paul, the sports that we do do not engage in, like the false, well, we got back to school, everything was canceled. And the budget, it really almost shows the whole year, I guess, the budget of money for all the sports, what, what happened to that money that we're not using because we're not having sports?
Paul, we won't spend it.
No, I, I don't think.
And, but I won't know until the season is over, because the CIAC may change something depending on.
Like, my team may say, spring sports may come back because they look better, it's like baseball.
And, and the food, also they go some of the fall sports to a different season if other things.
Well, it's also important to know that these coaches are still meeting, and they're still practicing, so they are doing what they have to do. So it's not as of last year where they, it stopped March 10th or 11th, and then all of a sudden, there was no season. Right now, the CIAC is going for football to start in February and March, and if that's the case, they will be playing then. And right now, I know that they still practice, there are all teams practicing, and I know anybody that lives around Daniel's Farm Road area, you see our kids running. So track is being, playing track, they're doing the cross, they're doing all different types of sports, so I think that's something we just have to know. The kids need that, so as long as they're practicing and they're meeting and doing what they have to do, let them do it.
And the second question was on strings, that someone affiliated with the background where strings program, I was funded the last several years, I hope, from the finance committee. We never budgeted for the personnel, we took the money from the strings program to pay for the teachers, but as years went on, the salary of the teachers went up, but the same amount of money is paid every year. So it was never part of the budget, that person in the string program. I don't know what you didn't look at for next year.
Yeah, I think that was correct. Jackie, am I correct, the parents paid for all interest?
Yeah, but the.
They paid a fee, and I know up until when I retired, we were paying his salary and using it to buy the, some of the materials for him and some of the, you know, instruments for the band. Strings, the children pay to play strings, and they must get their own instrument, so, you know, and that, we also used to cover, I believe, as of two years ago, we were not able to pay the total salaries of, from the money that we were bringing in.
In the regular operating budget, years, strings and band was over here, we wished it was raised, but we never dispatched, you said, a background error, to give you an idea why it's a deficit, because we never budgeted for it, the operating budget. Most towns do, double never got around to the fact that maybe we should, but we never had the money to put the string and band person in the operating budget.
The elementary school only.
Oh, yeah, but Jackie and I argued for years why we don't always, losing out on that particular position. Thank you, very well done, the report, Paul, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, we've been through the financials, anyone else with a question? I just want to add, I want to thank Michelle, Remena, for being here all the time to help us with our technology here, thank you very much, I appreciate that, taking and filming, and Katie, thank you very much, and Bill Chen, thank you very much also. So, okay, if there isn't anything else.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, have everyone have a good evening. Take care, be safe.